We call this meeting the Westland City Council Order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Mike McDermott.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Clerk Roll Call.
Councilman Godbout.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Pro Tem Londo.
Present.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
A quorum is present.
No presentations or announcements. We move to questions or input on the agenda. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the agenda. Questions asked will be answered during the agenda item following a motion of support from the council. Is there anyone on my right?
Richard Graham from Westland, and with Move Westland Forward. Good evening, City Council Mayor. Regarding item 10 on new business vouchers, expense of over $600 for William Wild for the U.S. Conference of Mayors, can you confirm was this an event in Westland, the state of Michigan, or if not, where was this held? Regarding item C on the consent calendar and item 6, new business for the upcoming budget, this is the economic development strategy provided by the Bonner Group. This group is one of the highest regarding agencies in the state, if not the country. I know this costs taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars, but in my opinion, well worth it. While it is a devastating report on the last 15 years that Mayor Wild has been mayor, it also provides a path to improve, but it will cost the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars every year. The Bonner Group provided a very detailed report and put a spotlight on some of the long-term glaring issues within the city and economic department. Remember, Mayor Wild has been mayor for 15, over 15 years, and Councilman Godbout has been on council for over 20 years. One fact is our current economic director is related to Deputy Mayor Ready. We also believe there is another Ready family member in this department, or maybe the planning department. Deputy Mayor Ready is a direct report for directors, I believe, and I wonder if the Bonner Group knows this. Some glaring issues. Understaffed economic department. Recommendation is at least four people, Wild has two. The city needs to develop a capable staff. Maybe Councilman Hart was right regarding a recent article in the Hometown Life. The city needs to have metrics to measure activity and success. Really, no metrics within a department? No quarterly sit-down to review, or does the deputy mayor do this with a family member? They also state the need for an overall department director. The mall is listed as a key area for economic development, and I quote, "for the long-term viability of the community." Items raised in the report are other neighboring communities being better, concerns over a small vocal minority, maybe if the city was open to all, this would not be an issue, no new major draws, frankly, hasn't been for over a decade, no community center, Wild took that away. Over 50% of the citizen survey said Westland is not a destination for young families, while over 33% said Westland was not a good place to live. Most crushing is that government jobs ranks number two. That's a number-two industry in Westland. That might be good for DC, but it's catastrophic for Westland. Back to the upcoming budget meetings. I would hope City Council will pool together a study session to go over this in detail before these meetings. Councilman Godbout reminded his colleagues a few meetings ago that these budget items are only discussed once a year. So will there be a study session? I'll wait for a response. Thank you.
Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? All right, we'll close, input on the agenda, and move to the consent calendar. It's a motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilwoman Sampe. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of aerial imagery service subscription renewal with Nirmatt U.S. Inc. for the Department of Innovation and Technology. The subscription renewal is for a one-year period in the amount of $15,000. Adoption of ordinance 253A, an ordinance to amend Section 2-705 of the Westland City Code to allow for electronic bidding. This item was introduced February 7, 2022. Approval of Economic Development Strategic Plan. Approval of request for a six-month extension of a conditional marijuana business license for each of the following entities. LJ A. at 37550 Cherry Hill. Common Citizen at 37655 Ford Road. Kinship at 37435 and 37601 Cherry Hill. Quality Roots, Cherry Hill, west of Newburgh. U.S.T.I. at 5838 Executive Drive. And Thanos at 8455 Inkster Road. Administration recommended approval of each of the extensions through September 15, 2022. Last item approved on the consent calendar today, adoption of prepared resolution accepting Parkside Credit Union's long-term maintenance of stormwater management system and corresponding maintenance agreement.
Say that again. Unfortunately, that wasn't provided to me, so let me look here real quick, and thank you for that. Adoption of prepared resolution accepting Heinz View Apartments' long-term maintenance of stormwater management system and corresponding maintenance agreement. Thank you for that. Moving to new business. Item 1. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held February 22, 2022.
Support.
It's a motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg. Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item 2. Approval of minutes of the study session held February 16, 2022.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg. Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item 3. Approval of minutes of the closed study session held February 22, 2022. So moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Godbout, supported by Councilwoman Sampe. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg. Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item 4. Nomination of member to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term with the term to expire May 12, 2025. Eileen DeHart Schuf, a current member of the board, has submitted a letter requesting consideration for reappointment.
I'd like to nominate Eileen DeHart.
Nomination for Eileen DeHart. Are there any other nominations?
Move to closed nominations.
It's a motion to close nominations, supported by Councilman McDermott, moved by Councilman Godbout. Is there any discussion? Okay. Any dissent? Any dissent? Mayor, did you have anything to add?
This is nomination.
That's right, nomination. You threw me off. All right, seeing no dissent, nominations are closed.
New business. Item 5. Appointment of member to the zoning board of appeals for a three-year term with the term to expire May 12, 2025. Current member, Eileen DeHart Schuf, has been nominated.
Support.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilwoman Sampe. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Mayor, did you have anything? All right, is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Eileen, you're back on the hook. Stand up and be recognized.
New business. Item 6. Confirmation of appointment of John Sullivan as alternate member to the Westland Board of Review to fill an unexpired term, with that term to expire September 21, 2023.
Motion by Councilman Godbout, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Mayor?
I could've talked for 20 minutes about Eileen, so thank you for reopening with the ZVA board, Eileen. First of all, Council President, thank you for allowing us to do a late-minute addendum to the board tonight for this filling of the Board of Review alternate spot. Council, as you know, the Board of Review is going to be meeting next week, and as we put our meeting together, we received a letter of resignation from Mr. Cleveland Anderson, who recently moved out of Westland. He was our alternate, and two of our board members also just recently had surgery, which is going to make it hard for them to come to the meeting. So with that, we're asking you to appoint Mr. John Sullivan. He'll be filling an unexpired term as the alternate. The term is to be effective upon your confirmation here tonight and expire on September 21, 2023. John's in the audience. He's a Westland resident. He owns his own law practice. He has experience in a wide array of legal work. He's got a lot of experience in real estate law, which should make him a benefit to the Board of Review. He was appointed by the governor of the state of Michigan to serve as a member of the Michigan parole and communication board. He's a former Wayne County commissioner, and he currently serves Westland on the LDFA board and the Youth Assistance Advisory Council, so he'd be a great addition to this board as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Sullivan, please stand up. Be recognized.
New business. Item 7. Set public hearing date for the proposed 2022-2023 budget. Administration suggests a public hearing date of May 2, 2022.
It's a motion by Councilman Godbout, supported by Councilman Londo. We did have a question. We had a question about study sessions coming up. We do have those booked. The dates are not in my head right now, but they are on the calendar. If you give me a moment, I can go through here in a minute, and I'll announce it at the end of the meeting. So those are the study sessions for the budget session this year. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item 8. Approval of proposed land division and combination. Two parcels, west of Newburgh on the north side of Cherry Hill, Cherry Hill Real Estate Group LLC, Quality Roots. This is planning department number 1933A. Planning Commission recommends approval, and if approved, further directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
Motion by Councilman McDermott, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Mo?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, City Council. All right, the subject properties here are zoned I-1, light industrial, and currently both are vacant. The petitioners seeking approval to combine both of these properties that are outlined up on your screen and split the resulting parcels into two that look like this outlined on your screen. Both parcels will continue to comply with the minimum zoning requirements. There's a few things going on here that are shown in your survey. Before I describe those three things, parcel A is approximately five acres in size with about 350 feet along an undeveloped portion of Florence. That's where it's gaining its access from, over here. Parcel B is about six and a half acres in size and with about 310 feet of frontage along Cherry Hill here. A few things going on. There's a 33-foot right-of-way dedication that's being provided in this area over here for Florence right-of-way in the future to comply with the Land Division Act and provide access to the property. There's a 60-foot right-of-way dedication. The property line goes all the way down to the center line of Cherry Hill, so that portion will be split off and dedicated to the county to provide a sidewalk in the future and just to clean up that property line there. And then there's also a 33-foot wide easement dedication to the county for the Hunter Lane County drain that runs the entire depth of the property along my cursor here. The administration and Planning Commission is recommending approval of this proposed land division. The petitioner is in the audience, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item 9. Approval of proposed land division and combination. Two parcels, west side of Inkster, north of Ann Arbor Trail. This is planning department number 2256. Planning Commission recommends approval, and if approved, further directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg. Supported by Councilman Godbout. Mo?
Thank you. So as mentioned, the subject properties here are located at the northwest corner of Inkster and Ann Arbor Trail. Both zones, CB3, outlined on your TV here. Parcel A is currently undeveloped over here. It's also the site of one of our conditional marijuana retail businesses. Parcel B is the location of the Romala Club. The proposed conditional licensee proposes the split of their property and the donation of the resulting parcel to the Romala Club to form these two parcels, and this is to comply with the requirement to separate a marijuana retail business 250 feet from residential zone properties. Both parcel A and parcel B will comply with the minimum zoning requirements. The administration and planning commission are both recommending approval of this. Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item 10. Approval of proposed land division. Two parcels, southwest corner of Ford and Newburgh. This is planning department number 2196F. Planning Commission recommends approval, and if approved, further directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolution.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Godbout, supported by Council... Oops, I apologize. Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Londo. Mo?
Thank you. The subject property here is located at the southwest corner of Newburgh and Ford Road, and is zoned PUD. It was part of the Sienna Healthcare Facility PUD, and on April 20 of 2021, the City Council approved a site plan for Tommy's Car Wash on the west... I'm sorry, the east half of this parcel. The car wash is currently in the permitting stage, expected construction here in early spring. The city received site plans recently for a proposed Dairy Queen drive-through restaurant on the west half of this property. Therefore, the petitioners requesting to split to accommodate that restaurant. If approved, the existing Dairy Queen located across the street on Ford Road in that Kroger shopping plaza will be relocated to this location to provide a larger building in the drive-through area. Again, these two parcels are also complying with the minimum zoning requirements. There is an access easement being provided. To parcel A, where the Dairy Queen is located, that will be on the Tommy's Car Wash site, and Tommy's Car Wash is providing a legal access easement agreement that will be recorded in the property paperwork. The administration and planning commission are recommending approval, and you'll see the site plan for the Dairy Queen restaurant probably in April or late March. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Sampe?
Thank you. I have a question, just from looking at this. This is directed to Mo, so through the chair. Can you get out... Is the only access point for both buildings, is it just Ford Road? Is that exit for both buildings? It looks like the one on the right, you can get off at Newburgh and Ford, but the back area, correct you, that would be the Dairy Queen, you only can exit towards Ford. Is that correct?
So I'm sorry, this aerial that is underneath these outlines is old. These buildings don't exist anymore, but the current site... The new site plan for the Tommy's and for the Dairy Queen will have an access drive approximately in this area here. There will be a full-service access drive for both businesses, and there will also be access available at Newburgh here through a driveway approximately in this location. That is actually on the Sienna property, but there's an access easement agreement that they can use that.
Okay, yeah, that was my question. I'm so sorry. It's hard to tell from this, but I just wanted to see if that was the case. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item 11. Approval of voucher.
Motion by Councilman Godbout, supported by Councilman Hersberg. There is a question on vouchers for U.S. Conference of Mayors. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. To the chair, that was the winter meeting of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, which is in Washington, DC.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or the members will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speakers recognize them to floor. It's a speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not stop once it has been started. Is there anyone on my right?
Richard Graham from Move Westland Forward. Council President Hart, my question was, would you call for an additional study session of council to review the economic budget report that was in your consent calendar, which, by the way, no one decided to talk about? So that was my actual question. I know you're going to have budget meetings. That happens every year, but will there be an additional budget session, or I'm sorry, study session, to go over specifically that economic development report that was not great? Many were shocked and appalled by what Councilman Peter Hersberg shared on his Facebook page regarding a very old Hawthorne Valley site, which is city-owned property that Mayor Wild purchased on taxpayers' behalf. I know the condition of this location's been brought up by council for years now, and even last summer, it was used as a toxic waste dumping site by the city. Still no clear... And still not clear who authorized and carried this out, which threatened the ecosystem of the Rouge River. Why is the city allowed to have this property left in this condition? Citizens would never be allowed to have their property like this. What is very scary, what happens if maybe kids are children, if they venture into this area that is not secure in this type of condition? Will it take someone dying there for something to be done? Did the Bonner Group visit the site when doing their economic development report? Shameful. We have a facilities director. Why doesn't he do something about this, since these are city-owned buildings, especially since he is so involved with the volunteer pothole patrol group? Anyone care to answer? Does anyone really care? It's been years now.
I also read from Councilman Hersberg that the City Council is considering transferring some authority regarding some of their approvals. This is utterly amazing. This is in regard to city zoning ordinances. It would strip council of their voting powers and transfer these to the administration Planning Commission. Please keep in mind, the Planning Commission is really appointed by Mayor Wild and controlled by Team Wild on council. So you're stripping your ability to vote, your ability to do some of these zoning things for development, and transfer them right, really, to the head of the administration. What is... Which is rather shocking. You know, we've had instances, and I think it's reported, one of the arguments was, so citizens wouldn't have time, wouldn't be able to argue, wouldn't be able to come up in front of council and have something to say. I mean, if those are the things that are being said by the company that you hired for this, that is utterly amazing. Thank you. Is there anyone on my left? Ray?
I want to come up here tonight, and then probably use my three minutes, because the reason why I'm using my three minutes, where I normally don't talk that long, this is disability awareness.
awareness month, and I'm really, really passionate about it. And I also informed two or three different city council people, reminding them that this thing is really important to me. I also went to the Wayne City Council and talked there too, and they really liked it. And they're going to try to recognize that yearly. To me, that's very important because what you all do, you all recognize everything else. And we also would like... I would like to see happen too is people with disabilities... we have a disability concern board here. We should be recognized. And I know Mike does sometimes, but I'm just talking about yearly with the disability awareness month. And I really take that... I really take that to heart because, you know, I've been really busy this month, and I'm telling you, from Facebook. I remember the days from the rug of this, and it would shove a lot of stuff underneath the rug with people just... ah, they don't need to be in our neighborhoods. Well, we proved them wrong. People are living a life. People are married. People are buying homes. I work at the agency, matter of fact, with Community Living Services. I'm going on there 10 years as a peer mentor, and I love it. That is my passion. And we'll talk about some good stuff that I'm doing. I'm also a CV member of Detroit Authority. Number two, chairperson of the Disability Concern Board here, that is my biggest passion too. Reach-out program at church. I've been a member there, been baptized there a year, and they celebrate it. I'm also a member of the... couple other boards there, like the rights and recipient rights and stuff like that. I am a very busy guy, and I even... I had two presentations going on this month, and one at my work, they're going to let me do one because it's about the disability awareness, and I should be the one who would talk about it. I really thank them for letting me do that. But then I'm doing two. Did one last week at the Police Academy, not the Police Academy, but one in Dearborn for Detroit, and trained them officers. Guess what? They asked me to come this week to talk about it at School of Craft College about the... about the training officers there and talk about mental health and the disability awareness month. And I'm blessed. And, you know, I'm celebrating this with me and my friends, and I'm proud of my friends these days around the community. My biggest thing of it all, we should all be welcome. Doesn't matter who we are, from walkers, rolling with wheelchairs, whatever. Try to be nice to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on my right? Anybody on my left? Close citizens comments and move to comments from the administration. Mayor?
All right. Good evening once again. Thank you, council, for moving through the agenda tonight. And I know that the businesses that the council granted the six-month extension and their conditional licenses appreciate the extra time as we worked our way through the legal delays on that. Council, as you know, yesterday was the deadline for winter taxes and finance reports today that the city collected over 97% of the taxes. And, you know, on average, this time of the year, we're about 95 or 96. So it looks like we're a little ahead of that. And that was good to see. We were a little, you know, coming out of the pandemic, we weren't quite sure what that collection was going to look like, but it looks like that they're right on track. Council, we've been getting a lot of calls from residents, you know, that when you turn on TV, everything you see is the plate of the folks in the Ukraine. And so we've been getting a lot of calls, residents asking like, what can we do? And so our compassionate cities kind of... compassionate city committee is kind of taking a look at that. I know that WLND, this, I think it was over the weekend, put out some social media with some verified charitable organizations like the Salvation Army, Save the Children, UNICEF, USA, and Doctors Without Borders. There are some ways that our citizens could get involved right now. So we'll continue to keep council and the residents updated as ways that residents can get more involved with helping the folks in the city of Ukraine. Council, we did close the COVID 19 vaccination site here at City Hall, but we do still have the COVID vaccination site at Jefferson Barnes, which is open Monday through Friday till the end of... the end of March. The hours vary every day, so if you call the Jefferson Barnes before you head out there, they can let you know the hours, and certainly my staff can help anybody as well. Couple events coming up. Council, you probably saw notification this past week that Wayne County will be holding their annual Household Hazardous Waste Day collection. It'll be Saturday, April 2nd, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It'll be in the Westland Shopping Center, JCPenney parking lot. So we'll continue to get more information out on that. Council, we just locked in a date for the annual Dog Vaccination Clinic, which is going to be in partnership with the Wayne Ford Civic League and the City of Westland and the Humane Society. It's going to be on Saturday, April 2nd, from 9:30 till 2:00 p.m. And this is definitely a much anticipated event. And so we appreciate all the volunteers that helped us that day because we expect another large turnout. You probably saw, council, too, that we've set the date for the annual Wayne Westland Memorial Day Parade. It'll be on May 29th. We'll start off at John Glenn, and we'll work our way to the Westland Veterans Memorial Garden. This event is going to be hosted by the VFW Bova Post 9885, and we'll have more information on that coming out. And council, we sent a press release out at the end of last week. There's several grand openings this week that we made sure everybody was invited to. There's one tomorrow at the Glass House Hookah Lounge in the Glass House Kitchen, which is a stylish reuse of a former Burger King site that's on Ann Arbor Trail and Middlebelt. The following day, we'll have a ribbon cutting on March 10th at the new Aroma Creperie and Cafe, which is located Wayne Road right behind Buffalo Wild Wings. The Legendary Axe, which is a very neat entertainment axe-throwing bar immersive experience, it's going to be opened up at the site of Hush, which is the former skate land. Their grand opening is going to be March 12th and 13th. There's also a grand opening for a new business. It's a first-time entrepreneur. It's called The Selfie Studio. It's on March 23rd, and that's in the mall at 34524 Warren Road. And there's actually two businesses that opened up. At this point, they're not going to do grand openings, they're kind of doing soft openings. And that's the Egyptian Kitchen, which is on the corner of Glenwood and Wayne Road, and Tabuli To Go, which is in the former... if you've been around long enough, it's the former Taco Bell that's on Wayne Road and Hunter. So lots of good stuff. Mo had a very productive meeting with Meyer this week, actually at the end of last week. And Meyer and Westland is going to be working with the building department on about an $8 million reinvestment in their property. So complete exterior renovations, lots of interior renovations, in my opinion, much-needed interior renovations, and also with their... they call it their C store, their convenience store, and the gas station at the corner too. So you're going to see lots of... lots of action happening at Meyer, and it's well... can be well-received. That's all we have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything from the attorney's office today?
Just quickly, because Westland loves hockey, and Westland loves their veterans, I wanted to inform the community that USA Hockey Arena on Beck Road in Plymouth is having a military appreciation night. Actually, it's three hockey games, Friday, March 18th, Saturday, the 19th, and Sunday, the 20th. Free tickets for any members of the military, veterans, and family. If you go to Eventbrite and search Region 9 VCAT, you'll find it. Or go to USA Hockey Arena's website to click on the link and get those free tickets. So it should be a lot of fun. USA Hockey is where the national team is playing, and they're playing the team out of Cedar Rapids those three nights. So I wanted to pass that along. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be in council comments this evening with Councilman Hersberg.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of quick comments tonight. First, I'll thank Ray for all your hard work on the Disability Concerns Board. It is disability awareness month, and I know you've asked me about getting on WLND to do a PSA, so we are working on it. I did just talk to another council member who might be interested in participating in that too, but thanks for all your hard work. Just a couple of quick questions. I think two or three meetings ago, we had a resolution presented to us from the Southeast Homeowners Association. I was just wondering if that was going to come forward, if you want to talk about that in your comments or after the meeting is fine too. And then I want to thank the Bonner Group for the economic development strategy. I did read through it. It's very detailed. They put in a lot of time for it. The only disappointing thing that I found in the report was that there was a survey done where only 48 residents had replied. And I know that other companies that have reached out to me before offer Westland had guaranteed 5,000, you know, replies. So, you know, if we want that feedback, we got to do a better job in that. So that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sampi?
Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to March. During this month, there's a couple of different things going on. I'll first touch on that it's National Women's History Month. So as a woman, I wanted to bring that up here today. I know every woman has a story and a gift to share with the world. So very honored to be part of Wesleyan's history as a councilwoman and sitting up here with Councilwoman Rakowski. Both of us really enjoy it very much, so I wanted to bring that up. Also to Ray, thank you. Ray actually did reach out to me. We spoke on social media, and I really do appreciate all of your updates and positivity and everything that you do with the disability awareness. Obviously, it's something that's very personable to me, you know, having a sibling with autism. And I really feel like, you know, all that you do and keep us updated is really important. So I really do appreciate that as well. Also wanted to say happy birthday to my son Gavin. He actually turned 15 over the weekend. I wouldn't be a good mom if I didn't mention his name on TV, he said. So we had a nice little get-together. I wanted just to say happy birthday. Last council meeting, I know this was brought up, we talked a little bit more about it, the neighborhood grant program. I wanted to highlight this because I really think it's an important grant for our neighborhoods to improve and to bring our community together. So I would encourage anyone to submit an application. It is $500 per maximum of applications submitted. So you can go to cityofwestland.org, or you can come to City Hall and pick up at the clerk's office, who is giving applications as well. I just feel like we really need to highlight this as an option for our neighborhoods to improve our groups, our activities. We invite everyone to submit an application. The deadline is April 1st, so funds must be spent by June 30th. So please get your plans in place. Please feel free to submit. We welcome everyone. Another thing I wanted to talk about, and one of the things that we mentioned, and I know Councilman Hersberg mentioned this, just briefly about the Economic Development Strategic Plan and the Bonner Group. And I have talked to Aubrey Berman on numerous occasions, especially the marketing section with my background and business development. She answered so many questions. She broke it down. This plan is a fantastic plan. It is beautifully written. She provided a lot of insight, so I just wanted to applaud her. I know she's not here, but the amount of work that went into securing, you know, economic development for Wesleyan's future, I wanted to applaud her and the administration for moving this forward. It really was a beautifully written plan. And I think that the mayor did touch on this, but I wanted to highlight, as a council member and an ambassador, I wanted to highlight these businesses that opened. The Egyptian Kitchen, the Glass House Hook Lounge, it's like a tongue twister, and Glass House Kitchen, the Aroma Creperie and Cafe, which is amazing. So if you haven't checked it out, I just went to that. Tabuli To Go and the Legendary Axe, thank you so much. I wanted to publicly thank you for choosing Wesleyan. I frequent Wesleyan businesses. My families do as well. So it's so great to see diverse businesses coming into our city. So I just wanted to applaud you for choosing Wesleyan. Lastly, I wanted to send some congratulations. I know that she did leave, Eileen DeHart Schu for your appointment. Thank you for what you do in the city. We have not met formally, but I'm sure we will soon. And then John Sullivan, we have not met, but congratulations. I've heard great things about you, and thank you for your commitment to the city as well. And I think lastly, I'm going to wrap up and just say that our study session, there was a question about that. We do have our study sessions on April 9th and the 23rd at City Hall from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And it would be really great to see residents out, coming and just providing feedback during that comment sec... comment... I can't even talk today, I'm so sorry, guys. Comment section. I really think that having our residents here and providing feedback, it really helps us do our job to listen to you guys. So I hope to see folks out for that. And I'll just wrap up as in saying everyone have a safe two weeks. Be kind, and see you in two weeks. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman McDermott?
Well, good evening, everybody. First off, I'd like to start out by congratulating John Sullivan and our former clerk, state representative, and former everything, Eileen DeHart Schu, on their reappointments. Again, as we all always say, you know, we're only seven people, but all the boards and commissions and all the behind-the-scenes work that goes on here in the city, it's sometimes a thankless job, but thank you, Mr. Sullivan, and thank you, I know Eileen left, but thank you to Eileen as well for all... and all of our board and commission members for everything that you guys do. Really appreciate it. And thanks to Ray, too. I know he's on our Disability Concerns Commission. Thank you for bringing up the fact that it is disability awareness month, and thank you to Councilwoman Sampi for bringing up that it is Women's History Month. I had those on my note sheet, but you guys predated me, so thank you for bringing awareness to that. And I think it's, you know, crucially important on both issues, women's history, to, you know, acknowledge the many incredible significant accomplishments that, you know, women, especially in the face of, you know, so much oppression that women have faced compared to someone who has come from a point of privilege like myself as a white male. There have certainly not been equal opportunities for women throughout the history of this world and the history of the United States. So I think it's duly important to honor, you know, the women in our lives and the accomplishments of women across the United States and across the world here. And also to, you know, with disabilities, honor the accomplishments of people in the disabled community and people who are differently abled and everything that they've contributed and continue to contribute into our society. So thank you, Ray. Thank you, Melissa, for bringing both of those up. One thing that was mentioned tonight was the vaccine for the Humane Society, excuse me, the vaccine event for dogs. And it was mentioned that we're partnering with the Humane Society on that. One thing that, you know, myself and Councilman Hersberg had requested is the quarterly reports from the Humane Society, and we're hoping to, you know, still be able to get those from the Humane Society so we can have a better understanding of what our Westland Humane Society is doing here for us. So hope those continue to come in. Just a couple of other things here. Obviously, if you've watched the news and you've paid any amount of attention to it, you see that there is, you know, a war going on in Ukraine with Russia's invasion of Ukraine. But unfortunately, Ukraine isn't the only place in this world where war is... and conflict is taking place. People in Yemen, people in Ethiopia, and Palestine have also faced similar conflicts. So when you're thinking about who you want to support, yes, our thoughts, our prayers, our hearts go out to the Ukrainians, to the Ukrainian-American community. It is, as the mayor mentioned, organizations like Doctors Without Borders, UNICEF, Save the Children. It is critically important to support those organizations as they support Ukrainian people, but also Palestinian people, Yemenis people, Ethiopian people, people in North Korea, people who are facing strife, conflict, war, oppression from brutal dictatorial regimes, from autocratic regimes all across this world. So while our hearts go out to the Ukrainian people and we stand in solidarity with them, I think it's duly important to stand in solidarity and recognize and just be aware that prior to the invasion of Ukraine by Russia, there are many people in this world who have faced conflict and strife, and it's critically, I think critically important to stand with all of them and make sure that these organizations are equally and equitably dueling out funding for these organizations. We've seen some reports, some really troubling reports on the news, where people who are looking to leave Ukraine as refugees, people of color who are in Ukraine, people who are non-Judeo-Christian in Ukraine are oftentimes last to get on the buses and the trains, leaving out of the country, and that's a problem. I think if we have humanitarian crisis, which we do in Ukraine, and we have a refugee crisis which is developing in Ukraine, that no matter who you are, no matter your skin color, your ethnicity, just be being a non-white Ukrainian or being a student abroad, studying in Ukraine or working abroad in Ukraine, if you're trying to get out, we want to make sure that we have an equitable and fair and just pathway for everybody to get out who is fleeing conflict in Ukraine. So certainly my heart, my thoughts, my prayers go out to the Ukrainian people in this really unjust and immoral war that Vladimir Putin has launched. But it goes out to everybody across the world who's facing this kind of strife and this kind of oppression that the Ukrainian people are facing. So let's not forget the Palestinian people, Yemenis people, Ethiopian people, North Koreans, and people all over the world. people, Ethiopian people, North Koreans, and people all over the world who are facing conflict and strife. And with that, I bid you all a wonderful evening and see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. There's a few things that I wanted to highlight this evening, with the first being a community development contractor meeting. This is a meeting that will teach those who are interested in the bid process for the many contracting positions. So you're going to learn about work requirements, lead-based paint requirements, even learn information how to become a lead abatement contractor, and also be party to many multiple communities' bid lists. And this meeting is on Thursday, March 24th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. here at City Hall, and you can go on the city website, so cityofwestland.com/contractorsmeeting to sign up for that. This Saturday, the library is hosting an open house, and they're very excited to be sharing their expansion and renovation projects. So they'll have meeting rooms A and B open to the public to come in and chat with the librarians about their upcoming programs. And that's this Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00, so that's PM. And then also on Saturday, the Chamber is holding their Health and Business Expo in the mall from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And this is an opportunity for you to visit a lot of the different businesses and nonprofits around our city and kind of get a one-stop shopping opportunity there. You know, I'm seeing on Facebook the genesis of the volunteer corps, and I, I think it's great and it's wonderful. You know, but one of the things that really caused me pause was that there is the potential for the city to be held liable if some of these citizens team up with the city. So I think before we have any joint ventures between our public residents and any of our city entities, we really need to be looking at a liability release, and perhaps we could have this city attorneys look into that before we do any damage. But other than that, I like it. You know, the other thing, let me see. Oh, yes, Sunday is daylight savings. So it's the, one of the two times a year, that at the very least, you should be checking your smoke detector batteries, right, chief? So if you hear any mystery chirps in your house, most likely that is your smoke alarm, and it needs a new battery. So if you mark on your calendar to, you know, to remember during daylight savings time, that's a good time to check those out as well. And with that, I bid you peace. I, it was, I'm conflicted of being a person of multiple Slavic backgrounds and to be watching your, potentially your family, but your cultures clash. And it wasn't missed on me how very privileged I was to be able to tuck my child in and not worry about bombs falling or having to escape to a subway or anything like that. So yes, there is strife everywhere. Right now, what's occurring is kind of a David and Goliath situation. And so I think it's important that we just, you know, really take time to think of peace for all of our neighbors. That's, that's really what it is. So with that, I will bid you all peace and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Goddow.
Thanks. I just wanted to thank Eileen, who already left, for continuing to serve on the ZBA. And John, thank you very much for stepping forward to sit on the Board of Review. That's, you know, it's, that's a tough board to sit on, and we really, I really appreciate you stepping forward and assuming that role as the alternate on the Board of Review. Thanks again. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Pro Tem Londo.
Thanks. And I'll have a lot tonight, Council President. Also want to congratulate Eileen DeHart and John, John Sullivan for serving on the Board of Review, and then for Eileen, our former Clerk's zoning board of appeal reappointment. As far as the budget hearings or anything of that nature, we did have a lengthy meeting in regards to ARPA American Rescue Plan dollars. It was a good, was it above a five-hour session? So we have had lengthy discussions. We all have our wish list of items we'd like to see. We know what our capital needs are. So we have had some prior meetings as well. We will be having more budget sessions as well. I did, also, I did share some of that information from the findings from that on my personal Facebook page, Councilman Mike Londo, if anybody wants to take a look at that. And then I was going to highlight the new businesses. The mayor did a great job of highlighting them, and Councilwoman Sampson and a number of others. But I did want to mention just a few, just want to give a shout out to Tabuli To Go over on Wayne Road next to the post office. I haven't had a chance to try it yet, but I know they came here to Westland. They have another location in Farmington Hills. They came in right away, and they offered first responder meals for the first few days or maybe a week or so, I can't remember what it was, but for our police and fire. So I thought that was really classy, a great thing for them to do, to come in and come into the community. As far as the Legendary Axe, I've been able to go by there a couple times and check it out. Cody Bailey did a fantastic job with that space. I'm sure Council, he's writing it down now. Council President can offer up a lot more detail. It used to just be a storage center in the back of Skate Land, just an empty, dusty area. And now it is just an incredible facility. If anyone wants to challenge me, I'm doing really well at throwing those axes now, so bring it. And then I think that's all we really got tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll begin tonight by thanking Councilman McDermott for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Also, clarification, Council McDermott, just so you know, if you didn't get it, let me know. The MHS did come from Devin Adams, and I have February 23rd. So we did, we did get that. So, but if you didn't, let me know, and I'll get it to you. I'll forward it to you again. Congratulations, of course, to Eileen, or I should, we just actually just should be thanking her and thanking her and thanking her, but also congratulating her. But for all the work that she does, thank you, Eileen. If you're watching this, thank you. I'll, I'll tell you next time in person as well. And, and John, Mr. Sullivan, that, that's a tough board. So they always say if you want to get something done, you find a busy person, right? So, so you got, you got your hands full, but we're really thankful for it. We're really thankful. If there's any help you need from us, let us know. But it sounds like you're well-credentialed, and you've got what you need to go ahead and get through that, so we appreciate it. Yep, the budget study sessions are the 9th and 23rd. Just couldn't pull them off the top of my head at that moment, so thank you. There's probably going to be a lot of study sessions coming on. I've been talking with the mayor and as well as my colleagues, a lot going on with ARPA infrastructure spending, what our budget looks like. We now have these other economic development reports coming out. So there's a lot of discussions going on. We've been pretty busy over the past two months, I'd say, with a lot of study sessions. And I've told my colleagues that there's probably a lot more where that came from. So, you know, keep your calendar clear, and I'll, I'll let you know as soon as possible. So there are a lot of things coming, and as always, we always invite the public, come out and offer your input. So, but do keep your eyes peeled. With that, I think I've got, oh, Legend, two things. Legendary Axe, yes. Really impressed. If you guys ever went to his haunted house attraction, I've said before up here, the artistic ability that he and his team have is really second to none. I've seen them take probably some of the most challenging environments and turn them into something extremely impressive, and they, they do it by hand. They, they don't buy in these props. There are a lot of times, they're just actually making these themselves out of raw materials. And the Legendary Axe that I've gone by and see is really no exception. It is really, really well-done. So when they are open, I think they're opening this weekend as their grand opening, I believe. So do go and check them out. It's really neat. It's really exciting. If you've never done axe-throwing before, go for it. If you've never done it, go ahead and give it a try. Councilman Londo's gotten pretty good at it. I think my wife's even better, so I make sure to mind my Ps and Qs. So she can now reach me from a distance with the axe. So go check it out. And the other one I want to plug is, I did actually go to Aroma, the new creperia. My son, my youngest son eyeballed that about three weeks ago, and he has been asking me every day, "When do we go to the creperia? When do we go to the creperia? When do we go to the creperia?" So finally, he broke me down because I had time. We took him in the other night. And it's actually, I'm impressed. It's a really large space. It's a lot, it's really open. It's the old Payless Shoe Stores location there, but really high ceilings, really wide, and very well-decorated, very well-done, very smart, and a really impressive menu. And a, actually, the, the staff there was very energetic and very exciting. So go in and check them out. I think they're going to need our help because it looks like they spent an awful lot of money on the space. So they, they need our help. So please go out there and support them and give them all the support you can. So with that, we, all the other businesses opening, so a lot going on in the city, so come check it out. And thank you for your time. Is there a motion to adjourn?